Okay, we get started. Uh, the work, the work session of February 25th. Call at 7:30 PM. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Banta?
Here.
Dr. Cohen here. Mrs. Frankel?
Present.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Quackenbush?
Here.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
Mr. Spindell?
Present.
Mrs. Wallace?
Here.
Mr. Barberulo?
Here.
Can you turn me on the complex?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their own interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Family Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof distributed to the persons on the approved list. Posted in the Board of Education. Board of Education administrative office and sent to the Bergen Record and Star Ledger. The announcement posting for the work session along with the date, place, and time thereof was distributed on January 25th, 2019. The items to be discussed during the closed work session if needed of the February 25th work session may include personal matters, student matters, legal matters, renegotiations and agreements, and tactics and techniques utilized in protecting public safety and property. The results of these discussions will be made public as soon as possible. Okay, so tonight, since this is our first work session, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mr. Nick Garcia, and then Nick is going to go through a few things on how we're going to operate tonight.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, everyone. So, work session, this is something new that we're going through as a board, so bear with us as we go through this first process. Before we jump into the agenda of the work session, because it's something new, this came out of our board retreats, we had two board retreats this school year, and one of the topics was how to run our board meetings a little bit more efficiently. And how to, you know, sometimes on a Thursday night when we have our board meetings, we'll spend a lot of time on our committee minutes, our committee reports that go out, and we said, you know, maybe it's a good topic for us to have these conversations in work session. Maybe new business, things that, ideas that come up, why not have these in a work session? So, we decided to add a work session meeting on a monthly basis, on an as-needed basis. We scheduled one for every month of the year. Usually the Thursday before our regular scheduled board meeting. This month, because of the week off last week, if we do have the week off before the fourth Thursday, we'll have it the Monday before. And it'll give us an opportunity to have some more open dialogue and not stray away from what the regular board agenda is. So, Thursday night's board agenda may move a little bit quicker than a normal board meeting, knock on wood. You know, tonight allows us to have a little more open dialogue where relevant. Before we do that, one of the things that we're going to be doing that'll be a new practice for the board, which a lot of boards already implement, and New Jersey school boards recommend it, was to have two portions of public comment. Currently, or in the past, we had a portion of public comment after every section, whether it was special ed, curriculum, finance. Now, we'll do, you know, we'll open it up for board or public comment to have a comment on anything in the beginning of the night that's on the board agenda. And then, when we're done going through the board agenda, there'll be another public portion and board portion to comment on any new business. So, if somebody wanted to get up and say, "I want to know why we're not implementing this textbook," or something, at the end, it's not on the agenda, you can do that at the end of the meeting. So, now, I'll say, is there any, anybody like to speak on anything that's on this agenda right now?
Anybody from the public have any comments on the current agenda?
I don't have it.
It's right over there. I mean, it's, right now, our agenda is just committee reports, the board charter, which reflects the board retreat, our agenda for the board, and scheduling new meeting dates, and then we'll get into new business. All right, so, the first thing we'll do is, since that was just my update, my report is just the new work session style, so we're going to jump into committee reports. Curriculum, Mike?
All right, so, we had a really good, whatever the whole committee's problem. I like, I like education.
Education.
But anyways, we really discussed three things, and then we discussed upcoming topics, okay? That the whole committee decided as people were giving me ideas and as the administration had ideas. The first presentation we had was really, really, a really incredible presentation by Dr. Lacatina and Mrs. D on the REACH program. And what I was really impressed with, and I think the committee, I could speak for the committee, was really impressed with was how quickly the reaction was to the problem that was identified and solutions created to fix the problem for next year. Dr. Lacatina and Mrs. D, and it's nice because Mrs. D is principal of Linkcrest, is also in charge now of the REACH program. And they attended a program, where was the program?
In Minneapolis.
In Minneapolis, a national program in Minneapolis about gifted and talented. And they also attended the county meeting, too. And they came up, what they came up with was a tiered approach to the REACH program, so that it would identify kids on all levels of this gifted and talented spectrum. And at the same time, it would enable some, it would enable the regular gen ed population to also get enriched with some activities, too, that's outside the curriculum. So, and if, you know, if a child was at this side of the, of the line and needed a lot of individual support for his specific or her specific gifted and talented, that's what they would get, okay? And then, there'd be a whole nother set of kids that don't meet that criteria, but meet other criteria to get enriched. And it's also bringing it down and identifying these kids in the lower grades, beginning at the end of kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, to make sure that these kids are identified, and the kids that need the extra help, the support from the beginning, get the support they need. So, I was excited about that. Teachers are going to get professional development on this, and also on, so everyone's on the same page. Because, because at this point, some teachers apparently are saying one thing, some teachers are saying another thing, everyone's going to be on the same page, because that's the program for the district, basically. Early testing and observation, parents meeting, so the committee suggested to the administration, and the administration agreed, that the best way to roll this out is, in the spring, to have parent meetings. That, so that, you know, everyone's on the same page, again, everybody's on the same page. And the people that are, that are teaching the REACH program, the people that are running the REACH program are talking to the parents, so they know, everyone gets the same, the same, the same statement. Everyone gets the same. And there's also, they're asking for one additional teacher to help implement the REACH program, especially the testing part. So, more on that, in May, we're going to, that's going to be another topic. The topic's going to come up again at the education meeting to kind of finalize it and see where they are at that point. But I have never, in my years on the board, I've never seen a problem identified and solution, real solutions made and getting ready to be implemented in the timeframe that this, that this has happened. So, really, thank you, Dr. Lacatina and Mrs. D.
I just also wanted to add, I believe that you're going to be implementing it now in grade three mid-year. So, it will be one year earlier that we'll be implementing.
Awesome, so what we were envisioning was similar to what we did with standards-based grading parent nights, where we did multiple nights for parents to come out to their respective schools. Not doing every single school, but maybe doing two parent nights, where we go where Dr. Lacatina and Ms. D present with the teachers on what the new REACH program will look like and what it will entail for the 1920 school year. So, we'll be having that in the spring, that's what Mike was referencing.
And redoing the pamphlet.
And will those meetings be accessible to board members to attend as well, since we weren't ready to the initial? Money was more important.
All right, and then, we talked about mindfulness, and teachers are continuing to have opportunities for PD and opportunities to learn, to learn about mindfulness. And as a matter of fact, the morning of the March PD Day will be mental health mindfulness webinar. And then, we went to technology. So, that's another exciting, exciting new phase that, that we're trying to get into, and that is to start rolling out a one-to-one initiative. So, there's been some changes. One change is the tech department now reports to superintendent directly. And by September, they, there should be enough access points in all the schools, right? In all the schools to alleviate some of the problems we've been hearing about, about laptops, internet in some spots. So, they're going to, the plan is to roll out to high school teachers, to give high school teachers a device before the end of the year. So, that way, they have it during the summer, they can start to learn the device. And it's kind of a, it's a really sound way of doing it, because I've seen it done that way. And the idea is that the freshman class of two, of next year, next year's freshmen would receive one-to-one devices around January. After the teachers are trained and everything gets used to it and, and everything else. And they're looking at a device a little better than a Chromebook, actually. They're looking at a device, a Dell 3180, I think, about 90, but I think it was 3180.
3190.
It is 90? Oh, I take that, okay. And...
That's a, we like that device, that's a device we think we're moving in that direction, so we're piloting 30 of them, giving them to champion teachers, supervisors, and that's one of the devices we're going to start with. Hopefully, if we like that, that's great, but if not, we gave ourselves enough time to potentially look at another device. We looked at several devices before, but this is the first one we're actually going to pilot in a large portion.
And it's a Windows-based device?
Windows-based device, that you could still, you could either use a Microsoft or Google platform on it.
And upcoming topics for discussion?
Can we talk about the price of those, 3190s?
There is, we're not there yet. Right now, we're piloting them for free, there's no cost, we're piloting them into the school year, but then we can get into negotiating with who could give us the best price.
Okay.
You only hear my negotiating skills.
Do you have any questions?
You can correct me if I misunderstood this. So, you're saying that the Wi-Fi issues will be eliminated at the high school?
Yes.
Has it been worked, worked out in terms of where the, where sector the teachers needed, the extra teacher, for the REACH program? Is it, is it a, someone was going to share?
It will be a district, it will be a district. All the REACH teachers are district position.
Yeah, I'm very impressed with the work, the report for the, for the REACH program. But I really would like to see what's being done with REACH at no expense to the taxpayer. That's what I really would like to see, that we find the money from our current funds, from our current budget, to make sure we don't pass any increase to the taxpayers. That's something that I really would like to see. You know, that we find the resources from what the taxpayers are already paying to make sure we are the S and E's of all the students.
But that's not what we're talking about.
I understand, but this is, as a board member, that's something that I would like...
That's going to be a budget, a budget.
And I know that on the report, STEM is on, is on the near horizon.
No, it's on hold right now, because we have other things, and STEM is always talked about. So, it's not that we're not talking about it at an education committee meeting. STEM is always, is always on the era. Alright. Alright, upcoming topics, next month, we're going to be talking about future-ready and technology, and the technology plan, so we'll go more into the one-to-one initiative. I don't see how that starts without affecting the taxpayers. April, transition program, we're going to talk about high school transition programs, special ed transition programs, and we're going to be talking about Sanford Harmony. In May, we're going to be talking about middle school, specifically fifth grade, and REACH again. And, and then, you know, STEM is on, on the horizon, but we'll see what else comes up, too. And obviously, obviously, the scheduling of those things won't preclude us from talking about other things that always come up.
Anybody else, have any other questions?
Yes. The one-on-one, we do have money in the budget from the referendum for the computer.
That's not from the referendum.
It's not, it's from last year's budget.
It's not from the referendum. We put in, we put in money into, to research, to see what we needed to do to go to a one-on-one, get it started. That's what we have money in the budget for right now. When we go to the one-to-one, we will get, we will get cost of the computer, the computers and laptops, whatever else it's going to cost us, and at that point, then we'll present it to the board, and it'll be presented to the board and the public, and then we go ahead.
So, that money...
That money, no, that money is not, for the future part is not there yet, no. We have to see where, where we're going with it.
It'll be a Monday next budget presentation.
But there's something set aside for...
Right now, it was budget, yes, for next year, there's money already set aside. Any other questions? Mike, thank you, very good meeting, very good report, and Dr. Lacatina, well, thank you for all your hard work. I know you and Ms. D had a great time ice skating all day in Minnesota, freezing cold.
I can't come here.
I can't come here. Oh, that's right.
Mine wasn't ice skating, but that's...
I thought you'd put yourself in the snow with me in the suits, don't worry about it. Okay. Next report, Mary, you have a personnel report?
Yeah, but I, oh, yeah, I have a couple of reports. Okay, the personnel report actually appropriately piggybacks right on top of what Mike already reported. And listen, there you are. All right, so, the personnel committee met, then that committee is composed of myself, Jean Banta, and Emily Cohen. Superintendent was in attendance, and Lisa Panaja, who is human resources, and the vice president, Elise Frankel. So, the purpose of this meeting was to basically review that part of the technology audit that pertained only to the staffing of the technology department. The report had recommended that one of the district goals should be improving the agility of the technology team, so that they could deploy the new services that you're hearing about from the education committee, and that they could integrate all of it more quickly. So, the superintendent reported to us that, as you already heard, the technology department is now reporting to the superintendent, and in part because previously, they reported to the business manager, who is inundated with the building and the CUSAC and the every other thing going on there. So, now, the superintendent is taking directly, reporting the technology department to him. He's restructured the jobs and reallocated them, so that the staff are in the buildings more. He reversed how they're in the buildings, they were in the buildings, and then met in the morning and then went to the buildings. Now, they're going to the buildings and coming back to meet and talk about the concerns and needs of the buildings. They're also, they are meeting on a more regular basis, with more deadlines and goals and so forth. In terms of training, the several staff members and the superintendent attended the technology conference in Atlantic City. Now, when the report was written, the report recommended the increase of staff, but before, but the staff had already been increased before the report came out. So, I do want to report to everyone that there's a director of technology, there's a senior systems analyst, there's a senior network administrator, there's two senior system analysts and four technicians. And, the superintendent said, that hopefully, that really, the, we need to continue to expand the technology department, as future budgets will permit us to do so, because expansion is money. So, that is the first report that I have.
Anybody have any questions, or Mary? Thank you, Mary, very good, very good report. Want to consider your next report?
The second report is the CUSAC report. Now, so, this is, this year, the district is going through the CUSAC, and it's a whole new thing. I think that's what the most important part in reporting to all of you. The state is now conducting this in a whole new way. There are many problems because of that. One of it is so much more has to be submitted online. And the staff used to have the ability to clarify things right on the spot when the, when the CUSAC people were in the building. Now, they have to submit all of this online without that opportunity to clarify, so that, that's one of the issues that we're facing. We've also been informed that the state has determined that no one, no one is going to get 100% rating on anything anymore. And I did include for the board an example of the graduation rate. We will be affected by the fact that in our school district, we have some students here in our district until the age of 21. And they're making an exception to that, so that will affect our rating right.
Should we go again?
Exactly, exactly.
Sounds like, sounds like not counting algebra, two kids, algebra, two kids in, that taken in eighth grade as algebra, as taken algebra, remember that a couple of years ago?
Well, you know, Mike, it's brand new, and hopefully, they see that it's not working out, and hopefully, they're going to be able to change some of that. Neighboring, our staff has been in constant contact with neighboring districts that are also going through this, and they are receiving reports of what a grueling process it is. So, I believe they're coming tomorrow?
Monday.
Monday, they're coming Monday, and we wish everybody well. One of the areas that they are particularly drilling is curriculum. There are nine specific concerns, and one of the things is that the state wants to be 100% sure that there are no old standards in any of our curricula. And so, our staff is spending mucho time going through and trying to remove old, they were good standards, but they're old, getting them out and so forth. So, it's a very new process. The Department of Education and the districts are learning as they go, and we're one, we are the first cohort in this area, we're the first to be going through the process. So, they're going to be learning, and I hope we don't have to pay the price of their learning. And that was the report for CUSAC.
Thank you, Mary, do they have any questions?
They came to my district last, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and where it was a grueling, and I was on the CUSAC committee for my district, where it was a grueling, it was a grueling process, they made folders all over the table and everything else. They did, once they got there, it was less grueling. Like, it was just going, it was just, yeah, it was going through. And I was impressed that they gave so much preparation to you guys to, to, and what they were looking for, and to, so that you had it ready.
We've been preparing for the last year, and kudos to Adley, Camille, Lisa, Brooke, our, our building level administrators, our subject supervisors, our teachers. I mean, this has been a year-long process of us trying to prepare for this. You know, this is the first time they're doing it, they do it in cohorts, groups of schools, 100, 100, 100. We're the first cohort, so we're kind of the best for everyone. And they said it's just not the old CUSAC anymore, it's very new. So, you know, we'll get through it, we'll get through it.
They did check, the school they went to, which was quite a long, they did go through every classroom. They went through every one. Lisa, and then Emily.
I just wanted to say that when Mary says the old standards, it's, it's just that they changed some of the standards. Like, for example, in nine, there was one, two, three, and four, and they combined them and made it one, two, and three. So, you don't want to have something that says 9.4, because now they changed the number and made it 9.3.12. So, it's not, we weren't, I don't want the public to get the wrong idea that we were using the wrong standards. It's just a matter of, they just changed the way they're quantifying them, so you just have to make sure that you change all the numbers as, you know, to adapt to the new numbers that come. I just don't want people to think that we were using, like, ancient standards.
Well, we were teaching math from 1970.
It's just that they, they changed it, and it has to be updated.
Right.
Math from 1970, which I still think is good, so it's not wrong. Emily?
The example of getting penalized for not graduating all of our students at age 18, is that a DOE regulation, or is that a piece of the policy that state lawmakers direct the DOE to have those criteria for CUSAC?
I don't know that answer.
I honestly don't know that answer either. The way it works, you know, just to further clarify, obviously, you know, traditional or regular ed student who's on track for a four-year college, or any student for, you know, who would graduate in four years of high school. However, the caveat is, if you have an IEP, for transition purposes and post-secondary goals, you can stay until 21. They're not picking up on the fact when a student stays till 21, they're seeing that they didn't graduate in four years and it's impacting our score. So, to answer your question, I don't know if it's the DOE, if it's legislation, policy, whatever it is, but it's been, every district's kind of clamoring and complaining about it as well.
So, I think part of our role as a public board of education is to be vigilant of these state-level policies that can affect us, for better for worse. I just, the spirit of a work session, I want to suggest that administration keep track of these kind of things and let us as a board know, and if we can do anything as a board to advocate for and communicate these issues, that we can help.
That'd be great. Let's, I would ask that we get our score back first, and they come on Monday, and then let's see how we do first. But yes, hopefully, maybe somebody else already complained and fixed it. But yes, I think that's a, you know, they've been saying at our county meetings, if we get the proper people to maybe write to the legislation and active, you know, the activists for us, that would be very helpful. So, if we do go in that direction, I may have some contacts for you, because they've been talking about it at my monthly meetings.
Mike, can I, I got something to say?
Just, just real quick, just to further clarify, when we talk about kids staying until 21, we're talking about specialized kids and in their IEPs, that we're, that we're still responsible until 21.
Just to answer your question, Emily, I constantly read the papers and stuff and look at all different other districts or different things that go on, I like the testing. But I also deal with the most powerful lobbyist and threat. And he gives me a breast of anything, anything in education that's coming down that could affect all schools. affect all schools. And he'll let me know and it's nice to know because I'm very close to him, so he can get our foot to the people we need to talk to if the time comes. Not just our legislators, but to the bigger guys. So it'd be good, it's good to happen.
In my experience on the board over the past year, that we haven't really done that kind of action as a board. There was a resolution that came towards about gun violence prevention, but it didn't really move anywhere pretty often time for, to happen. So I think that would be a good thing as a board for us to do and if it's these little things that the state seems open to hearing feedback and wants to be reasonable, maybe as a board we can be more effective in our advocacy than we would in the details.
And I'll bring back when I do hear the ones that they're kind of trying to get from county towns behind, I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
I was just, I was just wondering, does the school boards take a position on this?
On CUSAC? I haven't heard. Why can't he ask Matt? I can find out.
Maybe we can write a letter.
I'll, 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 I'll have them take a position.
Cindy? I just want to say that in the past, the administration has passed on to the board resolutions and we've submitted a number of resolutions as a board for certain things that have been going on. So I'm sure that the administration will keep us informed and if the board needs to make a resolution, then that's what we'll do.
Okay, we're going to move on. So policy, I'm going to ask Mr. Norcia and Ms. Penagia to speak regarding some policy things that we discussed.
So two things are policy. One, when we restructured our committees, we never restructured to have a policy committee. That was something that, you know, we kind of went back and forth on a little bit. We said that we would just take the policies that are relevant to our new committee structure. So maybe if there was a homework policy, we would discuss it in the education or curriculum committee. And if there was a finance policy, the finance committee and so on. But, you know, Lisa and I and our administration, we've talked about and say, it could get difficult. So what we were going to recommend is potentially maybe using the work session as a place to bring up policies where we need to bring up policies and we can discuss them here and push them through, or we can reinstate a policy committee. So we wanted to, I know that there was a question of a policy that I'll bring up in a minute, but we wanted to bring it up here for conversation because we thought that would be the perfect place for a work session.
So one of the things that we've seen over the years with the policy committee is that many of the policies are mandated or they're regulations. And those policies, we can't change, we, we can't do anything but adopt them. That's basically the situation. So occasionally there is a policy where we do have to determine who or how many times or this or that. My recommendation would be to try to do it during a work session, to see if it's possible and not spend a lot of time on a regulation that we can't do anything about. Policy 10 is a regulation. Policy 11 is a regulation. Policy 12, do we want that to be done? How do we want that? And policy 13 needs conversation. It might be able to be done in a work session. And then if it doesn't work, we might have to revisit it.
I, I definitely concur that this would be the perfect place to do it, to do a policy meeting. I wouldn't do it as quickly as, as Mary because I think some of the policies need to be explained to us as well because if there's a, if there's an issue such as a CUSAC issue, where they're putting a policy into, the state is putting, is mandating a policy, we should kind of know what, what, how it affects our, how it's going to affect our students. But other than that, other than that, I definitely think that this would be the, the best place to do it.
Gene?
I agree with Mary and Mike. We should do it here rather than piecemeal. So I think that's a good idea.
Start here. Okay. Everybody else? And that's what, it seems, there else seems, I, I, that's a discussion I had with Nick. I think that we should do it here because as you stated, Mary, a lot of the policies, being a former policy chairman, a lot of them are mandated and it's a lot less reading for me. But, all right, so that's what we'll do. All right.
Before we, before we move away from policy, real quick, there was an email that we received that spoke about, we have a policy on random drug testing in Fairlawn. So what I am going to ask is at the next work session, we can start the discussion on whether or not we want to entertain that policy as a board. One of the board's functions is setting policy. So what we can do is we can discuss it at the next work session meeting and see if this is something that you want to talk about and potentially move forward. So it'll give us some time to think about it. And then in a couple of weeks, when we have another meeting, we can put that on our agenda for the next work session. Is everybody okay with that?
Cindy?
I, I think that that's a great idea. I would just ask that maybe the board attorney be in attendance at that work session to make sure that, you know, what we're discussing is, is going to be, you know, upheld or if it's not. He's the expert on the law.
Good idea.
Comment?
Yes, one.
Just to add on to what Cindy said, also would like to see what our neighboring districts have in place in terms of that policy and any report?
Information.
I'm sorry?
Any information?
Yeah. And also any relevant report as far as incidents, reports, anything that has to do with the topic as far as the district is concerned. Anything that is already available that doesn't need to be produced, you know, any?
I already started doing that with Mr. Norcia. As we stated in the email, there's over 30 districts that have it. I've actually reached out to two or three and I'm waiting to get information back from them, but it's, it's all, just so you know, it's not, it's not that simple. It's a little complicated. No, I'm just letting everybody know. That's why we wanted to do that work session. We discussed this because we're gathering a lot of information to bring back to the boards so that we all look at the pros and the cons and everything else that is. So it makes it a little easier for everybody to make a decision.
Well, we're going to start gathering that.
How many, how many, actually, how many high schools? Districts with a high school.
How many, I don't, yeah. Easy, hungry.
Yeah, there's, there's about 30, but in Burn County, which is a few, I'm not burning.
No, I mean, I mean, high school. Districts with the high school.
I'm not sure.
And this exploratory work, as they prepare for productive conversations in that work session, I'd like to raise the question of the 30 districts that have implemented such a policy, if there's any evidence of it actually reducing drug-related incidents or usage. Do you have any outcomes?
Yeah, we will, I would definitely do some research prior to the next meeting. I just want to caution, we keep throwing the number 30 around. We, I keep hearing, that was only from, you know, one person reached out and said 30. So I'll look to see how much information I can get. It could be high, it could be low. I have no idea. It was just an email, so I'll.
According to the email.
I wanted the email that said 30 in the state, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
But I, I know of a couple in county and that's where I started, like, I'm not going to have to look, but like I said, I don't know all of them. And that's the type of information that we want to gather and everything else like that. So like I said, and that's why we'll wait for the next work session where we have it and everybody will have their information in front of them so we can have a more positive discussion. Anything else there on that?
I got it, I got a question.
Yes.
What kind of research other than talking to the other 30 districts of give or take are we going to? I mean, this is going to be beginning of a discussion in this work session because there's lots of districts throughout the country that will have information. There's studies that have been done. There's recommendations for and against by various organizations. So I don't mind discussing it. I, I'm not unhappy with the way we do it now. I think it's working just fine. But if the board wants to have that discussion, we're certainly not going to stand up and say no. But there's a lot, a lot, a lot of information besides what you're going to find here in New Jersey. So it's going to take a while, I think. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be a marathon, not a sprint to be, I want, if anything, to move. That's just my opinion.
Okay. No, and I respect that because when I got the email, just so you know, when I started just doing some, some of my own research, as like I stated before, it's, it's a complicated situation.
Yes, it is.
Okay? And then also an email that was sent to me as the board president from a parent, you know, just some of the comments, not, not nasty, not that it was done very professionally, but it was like, almost like you're now starting to throw more and more on the district and the board to kind of read the children. Like, you know what? We've got to figure out everything, so.
Well, that's, that's save, if we could just save this for the next work session?
We are.
So that we could gather some more information on it?
Okay.
Maybe in reflecting from Gene's comment, I'm a little bit of the opinion that I realize that the administration has a lot of demands on this time and this is one more thing to have to orient to and potentially go down the rabbit hole on. And as a board member, stressing to my fellow board colleagues, maybe it's in some ways would be to our advantage to step back and think more strategically about what we're going to do around drug substance use prevention in our schools rather than just jumping to this particular policy solution and focusing on a yes or no kind of dichotomous choice around this particular action and think more generally about what are we doing, what seems to be working and take a little bit more time to think of this possible policy change as part of a broader, what?
No, I'm listening to you.
A broader strategy that's a little bit more strategic and thought out and comprehensive than just this particular policy.
I'll, I'll think we plan, I like this as a discussion for it. Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
One would think that if a district was suffering from a drug problem, we would react quite quickly on it. But I don't think through statistics within our district that there really is a drug problem that is pervasive. So am I correct in stating that?
For the most part? Yeah, I, I, yes.
Okay. So then, working on.
Do I think every school battle, every school district battles this epidemic? Yes, I think every school district battles this epidemic. Do I think every school district should always reassess what they're doing and put their best foot forward in the best interest of our students because that's always our number one priority, our students' well-being? Yes. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to look at some of those practices and that's what we're doing as an administration. And that's one of the questions that came up as far as the policy. So we are taking a very good look at this. Yeah, I think it's, it's something that every district battles, you know. Do I think it's something that's rampant? No. But I think it's something for us to always take a look at and reassess.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Good evening.
I personally don't have any basis to be for or against or in favor of the policy because I don't have any statistics as far as what we have in front of us. I do trust the administration and Mr. Norcia in terms of how to perceive with this, but I think the safety of our students is our number one priority. And we need to do whatever we need to do to make sure that we cross the Ts and not the I's without overreacting, of course. So I think taking a look at what the situat, the overall, the overall wellness of our students in the community and what we can do to improve doesn't hurt without overreacting. And I think we, we should perceive with caution, but firm, that we need to do what's right for the kids, but without any preconceived notion, of course.
That's what we're going to discuss in the work session.
Just real, just real quick, I'm sorry. Yeah. Real, real quick, and I agree with Wilkin, you know, whenever we have, whenever an incident happens and an incident especially that hits, that hits the news happens.
All right, go ahead.
Real quick.
You go ahead.
That hits, the news happens, we could, it's very easy to overreact. Every school district has, has the nature of the beast. Every school district has drug education. Every school district has, the reason they have drug education is because it's a societal problem. It's a societal problem. I think we shouldn't overreact. I, I believe if we're going to start talking about the programs that we offer in our curriculum, that, that part of it, that, that part of it should go back to the education committee.
Last thing, Mike.
I just wanted to say that a while ago, not that long ago, but last, I guess springtime, we had a meeting where the mayor came and we had officers here, we had people from other, you know, towns. The place was packed. We had a whole meeting and sorted out with the heroin, what was considered to be academic, epidemic at the time. And, and we learned at that time, all the programs proactively, not reactively, which is what this conversation really is, but all the proactive things that, that we do as a district and that, that other districts do in order to, to make sure that they're sending students home with the, with the correct message. And I think that if we take nothing else from what's going on here tonight, I think that parents should rest assured that there are the proper things in place for their students irrespective of, you know, an incident that, you know, gets maybe blown out of proportion or, you know, you know, makes the AP or whatever. But, but the reality is that there's 5,000 students in our district and, you know, you can't stop something from happening, but, but we do things in a proactive way to, to ensure that our students are making the right choices. And so, you know, perhaps at the same time that we're going to talk or speak about, you know, what could be a change in policy or, you know, you know, a new policy or whatever, you know, maybe we should send the board members, you know, a listing of all the things that we have in place to, to, you know, from grade levels or whatever so that board members can be aware. And then maybe perhaps with that, after we can see it and ask some questions, you know, put that out, you know, on the web. I know it's in the curriculum, but people don't really want to look through all their curricula to find the standards or, or the, you know, specific things. But I know that there's so many things in place just from being here and having students that have been in district and things like that. So I think maybe it's time to, you know, re-announce that.
All right, we're going to move on to, thank you. We're going to move on to the board charter. First of all, I want to thank Mary and Elise for taking all the notes from the retreat where this came about. And they put this together. Mary had called the mayor, offered her services with Elise and I appreciated it. So everybody has a copy of this in front of them. And basically, the goals of the board charter are orderly and efficient meetings, greater adherence to the proper role of the board with district governance, greater adherence to the team of command, and adherence to professionalism and proper decorum. So to achieve those goals, we put a lot of procedures in place. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the board charter? And Mike?
So Ron, I know you mentioned to me that the idea is that board members are going to be signing this. Is that?
At some point, we're going to be all signing it.
Okay. And so then I asked the question, if it's enforceable, is this now board policy or is this like a recommended team-building, rule of thumb thing to follow? That was a question I had. I, there's, there's a lot in here that I like and I definitely agree with, especially the goals. There's nothing I want more than to work well together as a team. There's some specific things that I do not agree with, some that I feel more strongly about than others, and I'm happy to comment on that now or not. But I do want to just give that feedback to.
Oh, this is why, this is why we're doing this. Might as well comment on it now.
Okay.
No, it's Amy because this is why we're here, it's for the work session.
Okay, ready to work. Okay, great. So one point under, during the public meeting and work session is provide time, the president should provide time, no longer than three minutes, for committee chairs and liaisons to report using bullets only. And then the final bullet on the charter is that brief reports at meetings should be in bullet form only. I think as we just saw from the committee reports, it doesn't really work. I don't think we should put time limits on.
What was the other one, 92?
At the very end, the last, the very last, after the. At the very end, the last, the very last, after the dot, 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 brief reports at meetings in bullet form only. I think committee chairs should be able to give there-
Oh, okay, okay, I got it, all right, I'm sorry.
So that's, that's one thing, I would just simply delete that and not put how committee chairs are supposed to report. Ron?
All right, I, I'm sorry.
No, I, I would concur with Emily that the bullet, it's hard to report in bullet form, but I think a little time limit on it is okay, but I mean, as long as it's a, you know, a report that's, doesn't run on and on and on, I agree, it's kind of hard to do it in bullet form.
No, I, I, I agree with that.
I don't know what it means, though, because this is supposed to be a group decision.
As reading it, what I, what I would suggest is that we, I, I thank all of yous for sending out your committee reports before the meeting, that I would ask the board members to read it, and if you have questions concerning that, to, you know, all students will bring them that night too, but like, again, limited also, you know, don't ask questions, like everybody asks the same questions, is what I'm trying to say. So I agree, I don't think you could just do it, and all the other board members have done that at the committee, they want to be informed on it, so, and have questions, so I think it's, and I think the work session is a good point for it, so, Mike?
Yeah, very difficult for me to do an education report, especially some of the topics that come up in three minutes, and I would say that this is a work session. So this is the time to, to talk about it, I think. So, so if you don't, if you don't give the board time to discuss certain topics that are going to come up out of a, out of a committee that, that needs more time to talk about, this is the time that we're talking about it.
I think in the spirit of when we wrote this and when we discussed it at the board retreat, it was thinking that this was going to be done at the regular monthly board meeting, not in a work session, now that we moved the committees into a work session. I can imagine that was difficult for Mike to say what he had to say in three minutes and in bullet points to cover reach mindfulness and what to want.
And by the way, I did say it in bullet points because I was reading off the bullet book.
Not in three minutes?
Reach mindfulness and this, okay, we have the meeting, that's it. Elise had a question.
I just, I just want to say that, I mean, you know, you could rewrite that we were doing this at board meetings and it was taking 45 minutes to go through it, but I don't, I don't think, you know, that three minutes, you know, nobody stopped you and put a clock on you and said, "Your three minutes are up." I think the goal is to give a concise description, you know, the bullet points didn't come from us, they weren't given to us, to the idea to put it in bullet points. So, you know, if I were to read this, it says, "Of mentor, other members, superintendent." Obviously, that wouldn't be a good, you know, description of whatever I'm doing, but, but, you know, it's possible if you're writing your synopsis that you write it in terms of doing bullet points, write it in terms of having that, you know, even if it's three to five minute description, and then, you know, if you go over, obviously, like I said, nobody said to Mike, "Stop speaking, your three minutes are up." You know, you know what I mean? But, but I think that was, that was the idea, was to cut down, you know, some of the extraneous-
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. I wouldn't want to ever see anybody because we want, everybody wants to understand what's going on as all board members, so I don't see, like you said, but don't just keep rambling on about something like, you know, that's all, just like you said, be more precise. Either that or we could put electronic passes in over his chair.
I just wanted to ask if this would be acceptable? Provide time for committee chairs and liaisons to give concise reports, and in the second page, brief reports at meetings as the last line, is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
All right, we've gotten one done, next.
Okay, so another comment on this is under what we should be doing at public meetings and work sessions, I'm looking at page two, the second bullet point, direct questions to the superintendent or president only. That makes sense to me for business meetings, but for work sessions, I think we should be able to ask each other questions and not have to direct everything to the president and superintendent in the context of a work session being more discussion and the chance that we actually have as a group to meet and talk to each other about important issues. So, so I would maybe-
I don't think that's what it meant.
Okay, so we should clarify that.
I think that in the board retreat, we were talking about the fact that it's inappropriate to address comments directly to-
Another board member.
Not another board member, but members of the administration. At a work session, I don't think the intent was that we could not-
Well, I think the confusion is, like we were saying, is that, and what Emily's bringing up is this, because this is during a public meeting and work session, and I don't know if we want to kind of break that up, because I think you kind of can. I think like we did tonight, like you were just saying, Emily, like, I don't think, all right now, if Mike gave a report and you raised your hand and I, I acknowledge you, okay? I think it's more of two, just don't jump in, it's like, "Oh, so Mike, you know, I disagree," you know what I mean? It's like, go through the chair and I'll just say, "Yeah," and then you're going to, I'm not going to say, "No, you can't talk, ask me the question, I'll ask Mike," I mean, I'm not doing that, I got nothing. So, but we'll definitely, is everybody, is that everybody agreeing with that?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that, okay.
Okay, yeah, I think at regular board business meetings, it is good to go-
Yeah, no, yeah, but I'm saying, it's like, just like tonight, so far, if somebody has their hand up, I acknowledge you, and then you, you can talk to that person, that's fine. But I will tell you this, I, if I do see things getting crazy with, with each other, I will shut it down, I'm not going to do that. So, yeah, one second, Mary, are you up?
No, it was, I remember though, it really was that we should be addressing comments to the superintendent and not other messages of being intringing. That, that really was the gist of it. Do you want me to add that or change that part?
No, I mean, I don't, because I think you're still directing your, that you want to make a question, you're still directing it to the president, and then you're asking your question. If Mark wanted to ask a question before Mike answered, if he was next in line, you know, Ron's going to say, "Well, wait, because Mark wants to ask the question," you know what I mean? Like, you're still directing your, we can have a discussion, that's different, but you can't just start talking, you need, there needs to be some kind of, you know, some kind of order. So directing your question, you know, or comment, you know, to the president, obviously, if you want to ask Natalie a question, you should be asking Nick a question, maybe he has the answer, you know, you might not be at, at a, at a regular meeting because you're here, so then the questions would have to be, you know, go to the chair and the president. So I just don't, I don't see where that's, you know, we, we actually had this, we actually had this before the public meeting and then work session separate, and then before the public meeting and work session separate, and then we combined it because then it's four pages, you know, so this just made it, you know, more concise, so, you know.
Was there a comment?
It has been taken care of.
Okay, so my two other comments on this. So one is also on page two, under after the meeting at all times, the third bullet, accept, support, and promote the consensus final vote of the board. So I very much understand that once there is a vote taken by the board on something, that individual board members cannot work against that vote, so we cannot go out and rally people against something that the board decided. We do not have to, however, actively be cheerleaders for it, we don't have to express enthusiasm, we still have freedom of speech, and there's still room for dissenting opinions, and you're still free to explain to people why you voted in the minority, and to be able to explain the board's deliberations on how the vote went down and what happened. So the language that you actually have to promote the consensus final vote of the board, I think jeopardizes freedom of speech, and I think we should stick with the code of ethics, which is basically that you can't work against the board, can't work against that final vote, like you don't have to be the champion of something that you didn't vote for.
I-
Very welcome.
I, I kind of agree with-
I'll tell you the other side, just put your hand up.
I agree.
All right, I, I-
All right, I kind of agree with what you're saying, Emily, to the chair. However, I view this board, board charter as more like a, something that brings us together. Like, we're not obligated to be together, to work together, to pull together and find consensus. That's not at all, you don't have to agree, you know? But I think from the spirit of collegiality and, and team, team building and pulling together for our children, it's worth, I think, you know? But, you know, you are right, you know? We all have our constitutional right to agree or disagree, but I think we are to move forward as one, as one board, I think whatever the board decides that will make us stronger and more effective and efficient to benefit our children and the taxpayers, I think we need to, I'm, I'm willing to go along with what the majority decides on this, because we, we work on this together as a team.
Thank you. Mike?
I agree with Emily, but I think, I think that that sentence should be accept the consensus final vote on the board, not support and promote, because you can't support and promote something that you don't agree with. That's not human nature. But, but I think where we've gotten ourselves into trouble in the past was people that didn't accept the final vote of the board, not, not the promotion or the, so, so I would, I would, I would say that I think, you know, one of the problems, one of the problems with, with what we decided at the board retreat was, we did run out of time at the board retreat, kind of, and we went through this, by the time we got to this, we went through it really quickly. So I, I would agree with Emily and just say, take out the word support and promote because it's not human nature.
Cindy?
I, I also agree, taking out support and promote is good, but, you know, you express your, your dissent or your, your vote in the minority, it carries that way through the present board. Once that board is now new, after the reelections, that person who voted on a dissenting thing is free to bring that up again. Am I, am I incorrect?
No, you're right.
So, you know, I, I believe that the support and promote should be, should be out, but because we know that at another, in another year, if that person really feels strongly about it, then maybe it will come up again.
Elise?
I just wanted to say that everything that's on here is from the documents that we got from the, we, Mary and I didn't make up support and promote, somebody put that on the-
No, it's all on, all on the sheet.
It was all, it was on the sheet, so that's, as we just, you know, combined them together. I don't, I don't mind taking out promote. I, I do in a weird sort of way mind taking out support, because as a board member, if five of us, let's say, five of us voted for the superintendent and four of us didn't, you know, I would hope that, you know, once the new superintendent was in place, we would all be supporting his decisions and not, and every decision he makes be, be arguing and, and, you know, trying to, to take him down. So just as an example, just, that was the first-
I agree with Elise.
But that was the first, I mean, that was the first thing I thought of, you know what I mean? Because if, if five of us voted for someone and so four of us lost, it would be very easy for those four people to, to sort of disingenuously, you know, sort of sabotage every meeting by, you know, asking a dozen questions that weren't relevant or, you know, trying to, trying to make the decision, you know, process even harder. So, you know, support, you know, listen, I supported the high school, I went to meetings to support, you know, the promotion of rebuilding the high school, I was very disappointed because that was not the high school that I wanted to build. So I was in the minority and, you know, I wanted to build the third floor and not have a parking lot in the front, because I didn't want to pave paradise and put up a parking lot. But I sat at meetings and, till I was blue in the face and, you know, lost every time. So, you know, but once we were building the high school, you know, I went around to all the meetings and said, "We're building the high school," and didn't say what I just said now publicly for, you know, for many years. So I just think, you know, that supporting what the board as a whole wants to do, I mean, you don't have to actively go out and promote it, I get it if you don't want to do that, and I'm not, you know, picking you, but, but if somebody doesn't want to do that, right, the general you, but, but, but I think the support and promote, you know, if the board has made a decision to do something and, and, you know, obviously, however, you know, five people think it's going to benefit and that's the winning vote, you know, then I think the rest of the people should be on board with that and, and support it the best they can, even if they don't go out and, you know, with, you know, sign saying, "I promote this." I think, I don't think you should be talking negatively, you know, if somebody asks you why you voted the way you voted, you can certainly try to explain it, hopefully to be somebody that thought that you should have voted the other way so they can change your mind for next time. But that's just my opinion.
Mary?
Yeah, I, after Elise said that, I definitely agree with Emily that promote can go, because Mike pointed out, human nature is such, but I can see the, the meaning of support, as Elise described it, makes me want to keep that word there. So I, I don't know, I don't know which word. I think we all agreed promote can go, and I just crossed it off, but I guess we still have to agree on whether to take the word support.
Just my only thing that I want to say is I agree with the, with everybody to promote, and the support either way, I do agree with Elise and Mary saying about support, because we should support each other anyway, okay? Again, as I say it all the time, it's business, it's not personal, so whether you don't like the person or the way they think or vote, you should still, we're here for the children. What you had said though, the one thing, and I'm not saying you're doing it, that I would hope no board member does is that if I voted no, and I explained to people why if I voted no, and people said, "Well, I can't understand," how, how could Elise vote yes on that? And then I get involved in discussing why she voted yes, I don't think, that's where it should end. I just discussed my vote, why I voted the way I did. Years ago, we, with the custodians, Mary and I voted against privatizing, and people asked me why, and I told them, well, not my reason, my father was a custodian, but I, and that's the way I felt. So I just hope that we, we don't do that, so. What do you guys want to do? You want to take both promote and support out, or you want to just take promote out?
Promote, I, I still think promote and support. Hopefully, I agree with, I agree with what Elise said.
Let's just take a vote and see.
But, you know.
All right, so how many people want promote and support out? Raise your hand.
Promote and support.
Support, promote and support. Okay, how many people want just promote out?
I don't-
All right, Emily, you got one other thing?
Yes, okay. So this is in relationship to the before the public meeting and work session.
I'm sorry, what was it, before the public meeting?
So, this isn't what I'm going to say, this, I have something, it's just a technical thing. The language of the public meeting can be confusing because work sessions are public meetings, any meeting where we're here is public, so I would just change public meeting to regularly scheduled business meeting or monthly business meeting, to clarify that that's what we mean by public meetings throughout the campaign. Okay, but the more, the thing that I wanted to say about this is-
She didn't say public meeting.
Why don't we public meetings say monthly meeting?
Oh, I see it, okay, I got it.
That's the meaning.
It's like, where, where, I was like, where did you see?
Yeah.
Now I see.
Throughout, yeah. There's a bullet set the calendar date before public meeting.
Throughout, it's the month.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
So the second to last bullet point is discuss any agenda items with the president or the superintendent before the meeting so the administration can bring relevant materials. I just wanted to clarify that board members are still free to bring up new business, especially at work sessions. I am okay with going, you know, not bringing up new business at the monthly business meetings because that's why we have work sessions, is to bring up new things for us to have a chance to discuss before the business meeting. But I just wanted to get clarity on the agenda setting process, especially for work sessions, that, and it relates- that it it relates kind of to this last bullet point under the journey on page two, it says focus on the issues at hand. I just want to make sure that there are, there is space for board members to bring up items that aren't on the agenda. Either, we could set this as a procedure that we ask board members to raise agenda items X number of days before the work session and no new items can be placed on a work session for that month unless the president and superintendent see fit to it because something came up and we need to be responsive, or that we have the understanding that there will be a new business like there is on the work session agenda now and that board members are free to bring up new business and if the group wants to talk about it then, they can and if people say, we don't want to talk about that right now, take a vote and we move on.
Well, my answer to that is that if you ever, do you like, next day at the beginning, this is all new to us, we put the agenda out, which is Thursday, which, you know, we're not going through it tonight, if you have something other than that, that is fine, I think, as long as you notify the superintendent, myself, but the proper, the proper people, like if it's something to do with education, you need to let Natalie know or whether it's Lisa. Oh, I said the superintendent first, I said, didn't touch it, you first. But it was the same, said, so they can bring, he can bring the proper material here, that you're not asking, like, right now, if you ask him a question about something, the only thing he's going to tell you is, I don't have the answer and I'll get back to you on it. Now, if you want to discuss it more, then we got it, so that's why we can discuss it at the work session, you understand what I'm saying?
Sometimes questions that aren't easily answered require administrative time, I respect that, and I think it would actually be helpful as a board process during work sessions for the group to be able to give some direction on, you know, if that question's going to take a lot of time to answer, for the group to say, like, oh, I'm also interested in that too, or I don't think that's relevant. I mean, these are the kind of processes at work sessions I think we should allow. So I just wanted to be clear that if there's this expectation that we're discussing agenda items with the president or superintendent before the meeting, that there's still freedom to bring.
There is. What this addressed, and I remember at the retreat, again, is to not blindside the superintendent or the administration with something that they're not prepared to answer, because what happens is certain people, whether it's board members, and and we discussed this with public, public is comment, it's not a question and answer going back and forth, they have a question, we'll we'll get the answers back to them. We just didn't want to make it a, like I said.
We don't want it that.
Exactly, okay? That's that's what the whole purpose of it was. You know, again, like I said, you come here and you ask Mr. Mosier, say, right now at work session, Nick, I was just curious about that, that I read this, he might have the answer now, he might say, Emily, I got to get back to you and I'll hopefully have the answer for you Thursday, if not, the next month. That's all, just so that they're prepared, that's all. That's that was the whole, I think, if I'm correct, that was all part of the agenda. Jean, you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I I agree, new business should not be on a public meeting because you can't discuss it, you just can't because you're not prepared and it probably wasn't advertised. But I think the, it's more than not just blindsiding the administration, bringing something up at a at a work session. Individual board members should not be part of setting the agenda, that's the president and the administration set the agenda. If a board member has an issue they'd like to have discussed, I think the way to do it is bring it to the chair of the committee that should be talking about it, like I was talking about football helmets, so that should be going to the finance, with the education, you know, I'm not going to bring that up at a public meeting and say, what about these new football helmets? That should be something that should go through the the chairperson and the administrator and administration. So I just think people just bringing up any issue at a work session is is counterproductive because there's not going to be enough time about it. I mean, we talked about the policy, but we all knew that was coming, we all got an email, we had all, and I I know, I talked to a couple of individual board members about it, so that wasn't a surprise. But, you know, for me to just say tonight, oh, I want to talk about the football helmets, well, nobody's going to have any any opinion on that at this point. So I think it's got to go through a process where it goes through a committee and the committee has a chance to discuss it, maybe they like my idea, maybe they don't, maybe they don't even want to discuss it, and that's a whole different situation. But I don't think just bringing it up at a work session is the way to do it. We're doing the committee reports at the work session, so you could say, in three months, Jean had an idea about new football helmets, we discussed in a work session, I mean, in a committee meeting, and we didn't like the idea. Or you could say, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to discuss it because it's just such a horrible idea, whatever it is. So I don't think this is the place to bring up new business either. I think we have to go through a proper procedure and not just, because it's not going to be, it's not going to get done right, and then you're going to have eight or nine people, well, eight people because you're part of the agenda setting, but we should not be setting the agenda for these meetings as individual board members.
I agree. I think we need to adhere to what I would call proper order, or what I would call regular order, and, you know, if there's an issue, if there's an item that we want to bring up, we we need to bring it up to the chairperson of the of the proper committee and hopefully, you know, it will be, it will be considered by the committee, and if not, give it, you know, you you should get a reason why or why not, and, you know, that's where you should start to do some persuasion at that level and start from there, you know, because like Jean said, if if we all bring an issue at the workshop, if there's four of us that have an issue, we're young to four in the morning. I think it's, it will be, it will be very ineffective, and I think the more effective we are and efficient with our time, our children are the winners.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, I agree with Jean for different reasons. The reason I don't think that it should come up under new business, a lot of things could happen. First of all, it might put Nick in a position where he's going to make an answer right away and not have time to think about, and not have time to think about the whole picture because he's getting put on the spot basically, and it could, it could backfire because he could think about it later on and say, well, wait a second, you know. I also don't think that, I think there needs to be procedures in place because there's big items and there's little items, okay? So big items definitely should go to the proper committee and it should be assigned to the committee, but there has to be a way also for people, so that board members don't get disenfranchised in what they're bringing up because the, if there's a committee chair shouldn't be able to just say, no, we're not going to bring that up, because the committee chair decides not to bring it up, that that wouldn't be right either. So that's why those little, like, those little stuff that you have ideas should go to the superintendent so he could consider those ideas because nine times out of 10, I found out that there's policies and there's, there's things already in place that have been in place for years on that subject, you know? Just because you don't hear the drug policy, for example, doesn't mean that all this stuff isn't getting done all the time, and that sometimes gets us into trouble because someone puts something out there and it's just not true. So it should, there should be a procedure also to go through the superintendent.
That should go to me first before I'm going to come in, is that my question?
So we live in a democracy where people are free to speak and if we're a public board of education and we're all elected to serve, I don't understand how talking about new business as a group in front of the public is a bad thing. In fact, I think that's what we, that's what we should be doing, and when the board gets feedback like we're not transparent, which I know is kind of a nerve for many of us, that part of it is because the new ideas and the actual deliberations are happening at these small committee meetings that the public doesn't have access to or is happening in a lot of conversations between individuals. Sometimes that happens and so then.
That's, I'm just saying, I know that for a fact, I've been around a long time, that's not the truth, but go ahead.
The optics of it, the optics of it.
There's a lot of optics.
Let me just, let me just make a recommendation. I think this wanting to tightly control what gets talked about in work sessions or have it vetted or you can't talk about this, you cannot talk about this. We have a new business item on the agenda right now for the work session. I would like to recommend that we try to allow people to be able to bring new business and if the meetings are going too long or people are bringing stuff up that others don't feel is productive, we can revisit the structure. But the board president has a lot of discretion to say, you know, let's take a vote on whether we want to talk about this or table it or whatever, like the meeting's getting long and stuff, or we're going to have to return to that, like, let's not make a problem into something that we haven't even tried yet. That's my response.
Okay. A couple of things, I appreciate Mike agree with me, but I disagree with him in that we should be contacting the superintendent about all these little things. The man has so many hours in a week, for us to contact him, email or phone call, what about this, what about that? There's something in here about, why don't we talk to other board members? If there's something I don't know, I mean, I go to Elise, do you remember this? And she'll say, yeah, I remember, it was 1999, and and I'll know, I won't have to bother Nick. And as far as new business at at these meetings, what happens if all of us, nine of us have something to say for 10 minutes? Now it's an hour and a half, and we can say, well, let's not make it a problem until it is a problem. I mean, the reason we're doing it this way is because the public meetings have been going until midnight, that we've been here, you know, for for a long time after we've all worked all day, you know, you put in eight hours, you put in two hours commuting like Wilk and I have, Ron is driving all over the world, and now you're here for another four hours. And that's why we're doing it this way. I'm not saying if you have an idea not to do, not to bring it up, but I think that the more efficient way to do it is to go through the committee, you discuss it with Ron, you email him, you email the chair of the committee, and if your, if your ideas are shot down before they're, you know, they're out of the gate, well, then I think you have a legitimate reason to say, hey, look, I've asked Ron about this three times, I asked the chairperson about this twice and it's not going anywhere, then I would say, yeah, fine, bring it up. If you think you're being, you know, shut out, that's a different story than just, I think we should do it this way. And like I said, he's got so many hours in a day for for me to email him and Wilk to call him and somebody else, you know, wants to shoot him a text, I I don't think that's that's the best way to do it. We have a committee structure, we'll do it that way, and it's going to get discussed in public at some point, so that's what I think.
Elise?
Well, I just want to say, you know, I agree with Emily, we are, we are a public body and and I don't want it to sound like we do things that are hidden because we're very transparent. I don't see, I don't see where people are saying that we're not transparent, I only hear that around this table from one person, and I think that that's, that's just a terrible image to be portraying. You know, we we follow whatever rules we're supposed to follow, we have, we're doing this restructuring thing. I actually think that a lot of this makes us better in regards to the the sort of, and you might call it control, but I don't, I don't look at it as control, but I, but I I think that that the 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 idea of the, like, not having education committee of the whole, I I love the synopsis that you wrote and I loved watching the PowerPoint that that you sent out, and I went to every, it just so happened, I went to every budget meeting without just the way it worked out. I mean, I have so much in my head about, you know, the last couple of weeks of of school boarding, but but I I don't think that 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 we're trying to hide anything and 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 I kind of am like, feel, I'm taken aback a little bit by by putting forth, you know, that image that that we're doing things, you know, that we've always, it's always been committee chairs made the agenda, that's not a change. I mean, if you're not happy with that, that's always been the structure, you know, it's always been you're supposed to ask the president, you're supposed to ask the superintendent. We've been very sort of relaxed with that because we're collegial and we're all pretty nice people, you know, notwithstanding anyone around the table, and I think that, you know, like, when audience members come up and crack a joke because they have to sign, I mean, that's fine, but when 10 audience members speaks and everybody makes a joke about having to sign, you know, that adds to the time that we spend here, and I don't mind that, I like, I like that sometimes because at least to sit over there and I could have a little bit of back and forth, but but the, but the reality is that, you know, I think the whole idea of this is to, is to make it better, better for for us and better for the public. You know, you know, never mind, you know, the students, you know, you know, are going to be taken care of, but I think, you know, as far as meetings goes, there there is structure to meetings and, you know, some people don't like structure, I particularly don't like structure, I'm a random, so it's hard for me sometimes to be in a really structured environment, but but I, I think we need this and I think it'll, it'll, it'll actually make it, make it better, and I think, you know, what is the point of being a committee chair if you don't do a report, you know, I mean, now we're writing a little bit, but but we tried that in the past, but I mean, what, what's the point of being the chair of the committee if you don't make the agenda? That's the whole idea, to switch the committee chairs around a little bit so you get that experience of of running, running a committee, so, you know, I don't know, I, I think that that, you know, all in all, I think that this, the the idea of, of if you have an idea, bring it to a committee first, I think, I just think that makes so much sense than just announcing it, you know, at the end of a meeting and everybody's like, oh, oh, I don't know, I don't, you know, it just seems, you know, and then if you come to a work session, you know, like, if if you wanted to add something to a work session to be discussed, like we talked about mindfulness, you know, that came from from one person or we talked about when when you brought the the safe routes to school, which we already actually had in district by one point, but it wasn't really like a district-wide thing. So so, you know, that, I mean, that's another thing that's, you know, being followed up on that came out of a suggestion, but it probably should have gone through a committee first and then be brought, you know, to the whole board.
I want to add one word. The word, I was thinking the whole time while you were talking, was efficiency. It makes it more efficient. The structure makes it more efficient.
Listen, I'm just going to say, if you feel free, if you, you're right, it's a democracy, like anybody here, or me as the president, I'm not going to say, no, I'm going to keep my mouth shut, but okay. If you have something you want to bring up that's not on the agenda, just, just email me. Anytime you email me so far, I got right back to you, best I can. Just say, listen, I'd like to just bring this up for discussion and we have time with, I'd love to bring up, I, I have no problem discussing new ideas, doing things or something like that, I just want to keep structure, like we're saying, that's all we want to do, so I would never ever tell you not to.
I make a recommendation.
Good question.
That we make it a, a practice that a week and a half before the work session, an email go out to all board members and if people want to add things to the agenda, that it goes to Ron, and Ron, you can talk about it with Nick and as board president and superintendent, you.
This is.
Now, Mary, I'm going to.
So when you introduced the board charter, you you read to the public the goals of the board charter, but I'm, am I out of place to ask you to read the philosophy of the charter, which is the first paragraph?
The fa, no. The Fairland Board of Education recognized that all board members bring different talents, knowledge, life, experience, ideas and opinions to the table. We acknowledge that we can disagree respectfully and come to a consensus that all board members will support. We recognize that all board members are here for the students and the community of Fairland. Therefore, we look to achieve a better working dynamic among members, administration and public by developing this team charter.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. I apologize for not reading.
That's the philosophy.
I was trying to move along, I don't care. Wilk, I know, we're going to just go to that, we'll see one thing and then we're going to move on.
Just, correct me if I'm wrong, does the president with, in conjunction with the superintendent create the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. How we've been doing that for, is that a past practice?
Yes.
Yes. Has it worked for all the, all the years, all the years before?
Yes, it's worked.
Okay, so I think what we need, I think what we need to do is to make sure that it may be, that could be happening, make sure we take everybody into account, make sure that no one's opinion goes unnoticed. You know, sometimes, you know, sometimes some of us may have five ideas that we want to, you know, we want to make sure they go into certain committees for consideration. I know I have email. I know I have emailed the chairs of the committees for some of the ideas that I have for consideration. And not all of them, I know, will be for consideration on the agenda for the respective committees and whatnot. And, you know, but I can see, maybe, there could be someone here, two or three, who that may affect them, you know? And I'm not saying that's, I'm not saying that's okay, but, you know, taking everyone's talent into account is very meaningful for a lot of people, you know? And I want to make sure all our fellow board members are appreciated. And, you know, maybe that's not happening 100%, and that's making some of us feel that you don't count, but you have a voice, you count. So, I think what we have to, what we need to do is, you know, just keep our ears open. Just keep our ears open, because we could be, we could be hearing something, but we are just not paying attention to what is actually being said. If we, you know, if we listen carefully.
Well, I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, well, we're gonna move, thank you, we're gonna move on. And Emily, we'll take your suggestions. So, if we can have before, email me any ideas you have, I'll discuss them with Nick. And the end rate, what Jean was saying, I probably talk to Nick sometimes, two to three times a day about a lot of different things. He is extremely busy, but he never, ever doesn't answer the phone, just like I never not answer the phone when he calls me. So, like I said, just email to me, and then I will reach out to Nick, and then we'll go from there, okay? Anybody else have any other issues with the charter, other than those?
Yeah, do I fix it?
If you can fix it and have it back, we're gonna look to decide on Thursday, yes, so you could, if you can get on, I'm a English teacher, I would really appreciate that.
So, the next item on the work session agenda is the board agenda in preparation for Thursday night. So, does anybody have any, this is a draft, there will still be some additions from now until Thursday, we're still working on it. Does anybody have any questions? Everybody received this four days ago, three days ago? Does anybody have any questions on anything on the agenda at this moment? Some people already emailed me, I've already answered your questions, anything else?
Yeah, I have some questions.
It's just gonna be what I always complain about, and I just don't want to get in the habit of hiring, you know, I had a problem with hiring outside people for the high school play, and now we're hiring an outside choreographer for the middle school play. I realize it comes out of the money for, set aside for the middle school play, but I personally don't feel the need, I think we're, we keep going down that slope, and I don't agree with it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nine J. St. Anne's.
The Department of Education.
Thirty-one.
The Department of Education passed legislation that security money for non-public schools will be doubled to state level.
This is a pass-through money, is it?
We get it, and we.
It's pass-through.
It's a pass-through.
Okay.
We do all the work for them.
We do all the work, yeah. I just had a question on.
I just wanted to agree with Mike on this slippery slope.
The E2, high school's going down to, or what, FLHS, FBLA?
What, Future Business Leaders of America.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just didn't know what that was. I'm just, I'm kinda wondering, who's gonna land a city?
Thirteen.
Yeah, and, no, I know, I know it is, I just didn't understand the thing, I know that it's a thing. But I was just kinda wondering, I didn't know if there was actually going down there, like, you know, practicing cards or anything like that.
Card counting.
Card counting.
I just wanted to make a comment on F11, because I asked, I made sure to ask the question. Page thirty-one, I made sure to ask the superintendent that it's flat, there's no increase in before carry, after carry.
No, there was no increase in before carry, after carry.
I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Very good.
Just clarification on that part of the agenda as well. It mentions the tuition for pre-co, but I don't see it listed down there, I just wonder. Oh, just the monthly, just a platinum. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The page thirty-two, the community camp fee, is that, does those numbers reflect any increase?
Yes, forty-four dollars for the whole summer increase. It's predicated on our vendors and our trips, the increases that they have built in, so it's just an increase for the whole entire summer. It's a forty-four dollar increase.
Yes, Elise.
I just want to say that I like getting it online. I didn't need a paper copy in the mailbox, even though there's a paper copy here, which I get, well, I swore to get, forward one-to-one.
Ninety-one thirty.
Well, since you brought it up, can we bring up the conversation? Does anybody want a paper copy still delivered to their house, because we were paying the courier to drop it off, and the copying and everything? Or is everybody okay with the email copy?
I have no problem with it.
I've heard a lot of board members say, I read the paper copy, I don't read the one that comes home. Not to say we don't read it, but are we okay with going to digital at this point, or does somebody really need the hard copies though?
I don't have a problem. Anybody else have a problem?
Yeah, we'll have the hard copies here when we get here.
Yeah, the hard copy will always be here. Pilot hard copy. All right, is it okay? Now, this, before we go, could we, that's, goes for board update that we send home every couple of weeks as well? Everybody's okay with that going?
I agree.
There's a lot of copying, and it's a lot of, I mean, we're paying a courier, so we can save money.
Ron, feel free to say if you want to discuss this tonight, but on that topic, I'd like to revisit the idea of not asking the principals to include updates, the superintendent's update. I think as a board member, I read most closely what central administration is saying. That's what I feel like at the board law, we're here to understand centrally what's happening district-wide, and that the reports from the principals, if it's a time saver for them, I think that's something.
So, I could just piggyback on that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, this came up at the board retrieval, we were in our small, little groups when we were breaking off, and it gave up, you know, now that we have a communication liaison, and she's posting so much on our website and social media, that a lot of what we're seeing from the principals, and such a time consumer for them, taking them away from their buildings to do that update, can we just do the central office one and relieve them of that duty? Is that accurate?
I agree with that.
I wait until I acknowledge it. Go ahead, Mike first.
I have to say, I agree with that point, that we're getting a lot more, up more information going from.
Liz.
Liz, I'm sorry. But the problem was that my first six, seven years on the board, I didn't know anything that was going on in the schools. And I really, 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 really appreciated that update. I don't think, I think if the principals are feeding it to Liz, and Liz is incorporating everything that the principals would feed to her, then that might be a problem. But I think it's beneficial for us to know as a board what is going on in the schools. I think we get far removed sometimes, and we get far removed sometimes, and I think what happens is, we don't know what's going on, and I just like, like knowing, I like knowing what's going on in the schools that I am on the board for.
I agree with the premise of the time that it takes, but I can't tell you how valuable what's going on in the schools has been. I've gone to a lot of different things that I normally wouldn't get peach-jarted about, because I'm not in the, in school on a daily basis. So, I really rely on the different activities that are going on. I'm attending a bunch of them upcoming. And it's only because of that update that I'm aware, and I'm reaching out to the different schools and saying, I'd like to get a ticket to this, I'd like to go to this, I'd like to go back. I don't want to see, if you can find another way of making sure that we know that, that's fine, but I don't want it to stop, because I am out there for different events, and I love knowing what's going on.
So, I mean, oh, I'm sorry.
Chicken, chicken.
See, I like a kind of a compromise. I would like the schedule of events in all the schools, because as Cindy said, she wants to go to those things. But I would be satisfied if, as Mike said, it's there on our pages from Liz, on our websites and so forth, I would be satisfied with that, so that the principals don't have to write that little report.
The more, the less that goes into the superintendent update, board update, the more time Liz has to post and be out in the school picking up stories. The more time, and I, I, trust me, I get how vital the information is, and I could certainly compromise with that as well. And it's whatever the board wishes, but our office comes to a grinding stop for the update, because when you have 10 schools, plus central office, plus our transportation, plus our technology, plus our security, plus our communication update, I mean, it's 20 special education, almost 20 updates to compile them, and I don't want to say chase people down, but to receive that, put it into a format, copy it, I review it before it goes out, central office potentially reviews it before it goes out, courier comes and picks it up, it goes out, I mean, it's, it may not seem like a lot, but the schools come to a grinding halt to make sure that they get it to us in the time they matter. So, you know, we're just, I can, I can, if it's the event you want, that's no problem, and I'm sure the principal will be very happy to do that, especially if they're not gonna be writing up reports, and will continue to keep making sure that we post on social media. But it's up to the board.
Welcome.
Yeah. I'd be curious to know what was the rationale to have these reports in the first place? What led to us having that in the first place?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, what I informed was Dr. Palesis, it was about the events, which we would like to know more about, the events happening in schools, which I believe Dr. Palesis turned into a weekly report, and then according to a bi-weekly report.
I think in light of what you just stated, Mr. Northia, I think I'd rather, although I do, I do appreciate the information, I think there are other ways to get the same information without putting such a burden on the administration. I'd rather have, I'd rather have a principal spending time on how to increase the test scores than coming up with a, with a report that, you know, with that kind of report. And based on what you stated, it looks like it's taking a lot of, a lot of gold time, precious time from the administration. And every minute we take from your time is a minute that our children are missing. So, I'd be, I'd be in favor of relieving the administration from this burden, and I ask you all to relieve them as well, because we need them all hands on deck on our children, not on paperwork. Paperwork is a big problem.
There is a, there's a lot of overlap as well. So, like, what, you know, we'll, we'll report central office on exactly what the principals are reporting. So, Ms. Dean may report on the reach thing, but Dr. Laffetina already reported on the reach thing. Or I'll report on something that I saw when I was in school, and then I'm seeing the principals writing it as well. So, there's a lot of double work happening at that time.
Mark, I'm sorry if it's not right with Wilkin, but I really feel that it is beneficial, especially for me to read what is going on in the schools. I'm not out in the schools, I don't have any children in the schools. A lot of times, I'm not aware of the things that are occurring, and I look forward to them. And just to have a list of dates when things are going to occur is not sufficient for me, because it doesn't give you fine details about what occurred on that specific date. So, I would recommend that it be something that be continued.
Okay. Jean?
Well, it seems to me like majority of board really likes to get updates on what's happening in schools, on reading day, whatever. Maybe the administration can find a different way to do it, other than having principals put together a report every two weeks. Maybe there's a way that they can funnel stuff to Liz, and you can send it, you know, get sent home to us somehow. But, you know, I know, the principals spend a lot of time putting this together, because you and I discussed this last year, and I discussed it with Ernie a couple of years ago, and it takes a lot of time, and you're right, there probably is a lot of overlap. But maybe there's a different way to do it that we're not thinking of. So, maybe the administration can put their heads together and say, let's do this, instead of, let's get a report from all 10 schools. Unless, you know, I'm just talking about the mechanics of it, to save some time for everybody, but still get us the bulk of the information that we're looking for.
Okay.
I just want to say is that, what Mark is saying, I understand what you're saying about, gets on the website, gets on the page, I told you a couple of weeks ago, I didn't even have the page on my phone, the group. I personally, I mean, like this past one, you know, one principal, they put a report in, because they maybe nothing to report, or he was too busy, whatever, and that's fine. I do, though, would like to know what's going on, because I've run it up to you, like with athletics, years ago, you used to get texts, the athletic committee, about what's going on, and the record's useless. So, it's like, you know, you have no idea when there's an activity, it's usually two days later I find out the basketball team played last night. You know, just again, you know, I'm not saying to get into detail, you know, just to keep us up to date, like Jean said, a little email, have Liz just send us a little, like, all right, this week, you know, blah, blah, blah's going on, or something like that. I don't, I mean, I think it's great to read that the one school had pennies or something, and raised like a thousand, I thought that was awesome. But I can read that in something that Liz puts out on the webpage, okay, or on the website, or, I mean, on the Facebook page. So, I just, for me, I'm just speaking for me, I still do enjoy, especially the dates and what's going on with the central administration, but even you guys, there's a lot, but just to keep us up to date, and even if it's like every two weeks, doesn't have to be.
It went down.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's, well, I'm just saying, we used to be, I just, no, what?
Maybe we don't repeat ourselves, so maybe we tell principals, if you've already, if you know this is already been posted on the website, just send us something that might not have been out on the website.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I know they're busy, and especially now, getting into the testing season and everything else, it's just that I want, and I don't want to waste the time on that, because it's my favorite time of year, don't you know that? It's like hand-cancelling, you know? So, I'm just saying, I see, Emily, I'm just saying is that, I just, again, I do enjoy just knowing what's going on. I'm fortunate to have a child still in the school system, and I know Emily has one, and Wilkin has one, I'm just saying is that, but there's still a lot of things that you never know, and like I said, sometimes times change, you want to go to something, and you thought it was at seven, it's like, oh, no, they moved it to four, really? So, last thing, and then we're gonna move on.
Yes. So, I just want to echo Jean's idea that the administration has heard the spirit of our conversation, and that perhaps they can come back with a suggestion for ways to keep the functionality that board members find agreeable while being more efficient with administration's time to sort that, just to revisit the question.
You certainly can do that, which is also.
Okay.
I don't need a hard copy of that. All right. Miss Spirit. Have you heard us, Mr. Northia?
I will work on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, so, next thing we're gonna go to is new meeting dates for committees. Do we want to pull up some dates for committees? Now, it's time to do it. Anyone?
Yeah, but it has, when's the March, when's the March 4th?
There's, on the dates here, I just want to, I do want to just clarify that we do have a meeting March 4th.
Yes.
March 14th.
Correct.
March 21st.
March 28th is the regular board.
And March 20th. March 21st.
March 21st is the, is the work.
It's the work session. So, we have a work session on March 4th, which is Monday, to go over the preliminary budget. And then March 14th, we have a special action meeting to adopt the budget.
But that's just the budget. Monday is just a work session.
Monday is just the budget, that's all the work session is, on the budget.
Yes.
March 14th, I have a request, I got approval from my job, I'd like to attend that meeting via phone, because it's the day before corporate deadline, and there's no way I'm making that meeting. But I want to miss the vote, so I have permission to be in a private room to make the vote, and then go back to work.
I'll go to Emily.
So, when we were talking about restructuring committees, initially, we were thinking about just having meetings on Thursday nights, just kind of plugging in different meetings through the night. So, it sounds like if we have four meetings already scheduled for March with the budget. So it sounds like if we have four meetings already scheduled for March with the budget, that's pretty close.
Negotiations, we are going to negotiate.
Yeah. The committee has something that's very, very timely that we just revisit this topic at the March work session and look at scheduling for April. That would be my opinion.
I need an education meeting in March.
No, you need the education meeting, but I don't think any of them.
And I'd like it to be the 21st.
Same night as the work session?
Oh wait, I'm sorry, 21st is the work session?
21st.
Then can we, ask me, can we do it?
21st is a.
Do we, well, here's the, do we need to have, since we have so many meetings in March, do we need to have a work session on 21st since we have a budget on and we could substitute that one for the education committee meeting that night instead of the 21st of having a work session that month and then we could go back to the regular work session in April?
I would say that we started a new system of doing work sessions so that we could talk about the budget, so we could talk about the agenda. I wouldn't change it like the second month that we're, that we're into it. I wouldn't go back to, back to the old way. That's, that, I mean, I know it's a lot of meetings. It's always a lot of meetings this time. Can it, is there, is the 18th, which is Monday, okay for education? It needs to kind of be before the work session.
Well, I'm fine with it. I mean, your committee, I thought your committee, that's Mark.
So.
Uh, Gene.
So the work session is going to be, if nothing else, just to talk about the agenda for the public meeting, even if there's no other issues to discuss? Was, I mean, I don't remember that being the case, but, and I understand tonight being the first time on, but are we going to have a meeting about the next meeting? Is that the plan?
That was the whole idea.
But Matt Lee is saying the spirit of the work session, if you needed to have one, if you had committee, if you needed to have a work session.
If you wanted to discuss items on the agenda, guys would.
That's not how I understand it.
Me either. I, I understood that the work session was going to be to discuss the, the, the agenda for the public meeting so that all of these, the questions, the concerns, the whatever, the talking and the, and the commiserating was being done at that work stations, session, I'm sorry. So that when we got to the board meeting, we went through the agenda and we, and that was the end. That was it.
Yes, correct.
But even if there's no other discussion to be had, that was your understanding?
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
Okay, and maybe I'm wrong.
Can we, can we do a brief work session on the 21st with the education committee meeting before or after? And Ron, he was president, will have a lot of discretion to keep that work session brief and focused and just, and for those who don't, can't come to the work session, don't want to come as board members because it's such a brief meeting, you can still have corn, still have a work session, still get through it and have both goals accomplished.
Well, if you guys are all in agreement, we can do that. Again, I, what Cindy's saying is correct, but I guess I'm thinking the same way Gene is, if there's anything has anything to discuss, discuss on the agenda.
Agenda yet.
No, I know that. I'm just, I'm just saying at the time, but we're going to just keep it as the work session on the 21st for the agenda. Do you want to add the education meeting to that? Do you want, are you going to just discuss that one thing you were talking about?
Well, my time.
It's big, yeah. No, I'm not saying it's not big stuff. I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
Who's on the education?
That's, that's going to stay.
One, two, three.
Mike, Cindy and Mark.
So could we, and could we, so could we do it at, can you make six o'clock, six thirty?
Can you even do that night? No, yeah, that night she should be fine, right? Because you're done with.
March 21st.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you your job, I mean, but.
I mean.
You wrapping stuff up.
Six o'clock would be rough.
Okay, six thirty?
Yeah.
All right, well, now for education, we'll keep it tight.
I'll just go and.
Ron, we don't have a budget work session on the 7th.
Before.
Work, on the 4th.
I think we continue.
Yeah, might, might I also, might I also suggest that, that there might be stuff to talk about on the work session as far as anything that has to do with the construction and stuff like that, you know, where, as we get.
There's a few things that I'm not, I'm, we're in, that I'm not at liberty to discuss right now, that's probably going to be on the agenda, I can tell you that right now. That works.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that there isn't, I, I think.
Yes, I'm saying, do we still want to do the education meeting and then you want to do.
If you want to do it, then that's fine with me.
Is six thirty okay?
Six thirty is fine and then, and then seven thirty for the.
All right.
For 21st.
All right.
That's, that's all the meetings that we're going to have for March and we'll look down the line for that. Okay.
March 21st. So we're doing all of our meeting things, like even our negotiations and all that kind of stuff, because we have a March 25th meeting.
Yes.
Okay. You're, you're announcing that or?
Nothing to announce.
I don't have to announce that. Just us know that, yeah, I don't have to announce that. No, any other, just.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Any other meetings to do?
Ron, are we having a finance meeting?
21st.
Not in March, we're not. Nope. We'll finance because we, we don't need to because we're going to be doing the budget on the 4th, 14th and then again at the work session. So we're talking a lot of finances. That's it. I don't think there's any other meetings.
Okay.
Well.
Uh.
Negotiations.
Negotiations, we don't, we don't have to say that publicly because it's.
It's on the, it's on the meeting list.
It's on, it's on our meeting list, but we don't have to say that because they're like writing the negotiation. Anything else? Okay. All right, so do I have any other comments from the public about what went on tonight or anything? You're free to speak. Step up to the podium sign, you name it, announce your name.
Sure.
The paper, the paper, yeah. Just sign a name and then state your name, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so first of all, I'd like to thank you all for the, for the meeting. It's the first time I've attended. It was very informative. I'd just like to say that I. What's your name? Oh, sorry. First name is Gukhan. So I'd just like to say that, like I said, it's the first time I've attended. Thank you all for the, for the interesting discussion. But as a member of the public, just who's come just to be informed, I really do concur that it would be for, for the sake of time and efficiency if the deliberations and the, and the conversations not necessarily be timed. I mean, I know in the beginning there was a discussion about having it three minutes, but maybe just use social cues. If, if people are looking a little antsy or tone of voices are, are changing to the, to the sour end, you know, chip off what you're saying, be a bit more concise and relevant. It would be really good for the public, I think, because I don't know about the rest of the people here, but there were moments where I, where I was saying, okay, I hope this person finishes up what they're saying soon because it kind of got off to, you know, to a point where you just don't want to listen anymore, so.
No, I appreciate that.
So, so, yeah, I mean, if it's, you know, and I, and I concur with Ms. Cohen, it is a democracy, but, you know, at the same time, we have to have some kind of structure and I wouldn't mind if there was a procedure in place to kind of, you know, structure the discussion. It would be great to, to have that, you know, for, for efficiency sake and time sake. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, yeah, thank you. It was very interesting.
Hope to see you come more.
Yeah, I hope so too, yeah. Thank you.
A lot better live than, I don't know, TV.
Right, right, oh yeah, that's right, yes.
We don't serve popcorn.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything want to say? Just write your name in, please, and then state your name.
Hi, Robin Willens, Maxwell Place. So I did want to thank the administration and the board for all of their hard work and how timely everything with the REACH program has been managed. Really excited about some of the changes that have been discussed. I think in particular, you're hitting on exactly the issues that some parents have been asking about, the identification of children on the early side, having parent involvement with the REACH coordinators and their teachers and perhaps implementing the program in third grade. These sound like amazing changes and I'm really, really pleased and again, want to thank everybody for all of their hard work. I did have a quick question about, you've mentioned that there'll be more discussion in May. I'm wondering if there is an opportunity, I know you have your education meetings, for parents to be involved in these meetings at all or at least provide some sort of more information, just because I guess these meetings are closed meetings and it's sort of, that sort of idea of transparency of not really knowing what's going on and, you know, maybe emailing and sending information, but not sure, sure, sure where it kind of goes from there.
Well, we have, thank you, Ms. Willens, I know you and your husband and I met and had a very honest conversation about the REACH program and the future of it. You know, at those spring meetings that were, when we were going to present to the public, there will be some Q and A, so any parents will be able to contribute, respond at that time. And then we'll be meeting during the summer to provide training for our staff and working with our staff and then once again presenting in the fall, as Dr. Lafferty mentioned. So I think at that time in the spring, there'll be an opportunity for parents to jump in.
Great. That sounds really wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I did want to address one thing that Mr. Santana had brought up. I think that all of us agree that investing in our children is necessary and a priority in this case. And we've definitely seen that with the swift action that the administration and the board has taken. This issue was raised over the summer and we've seen in about six months, you know, a very clear plan put in place, which indicates to me and to other parents that this is an important issue and an important thing that needed to be addressed. I know that you were not on the board when I had passed out the budget numbers in October, but I'm happy to share those numbers with you so that you can have an understanding of exactly how much money this program has lost over the past 12 years and it being more of an issue of not spending taxpayer money, but giving back to a program that has lost more than 50% of its funding over the past 12 years. So I can email that to you when I get home tonight so that you can take a look at those numbers and at least have them available as you decide and go forward with your budget decisions in the next fall.
I'd be happy to read it.
Thank you. That sounds wonderful. And again, thank you so much for your time and especially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have anything to say?
Good morning, I'm ready.
Is it morning, not ready? We all.
We all your. I love the math.
That's not very nice.
Got some new math formulas. You have enough data for me, you have enough data for me, then it's warm.
Yes. Okay. So first of all, regarding the structure, I think I'd like to agree with both Emily and Gene that in my opinion, first you should raise the, an issue to committee chair or to Ron or to Nick, rather to Ron or committee chair. But if they shut you down, then you should have an opportunity to raise the issue here. That's the, in my opinion, the right way to go. That's first. Second, I only have two things. Second, big elephant in the room is the drug issue that we discussed before. We all know about the incident that was in the news. Thank you, Mr. Northier, for sending that email. I think it was the right thing to do. Don't be silent on the issue, can speak up. One question that you don't have to answer right now, of course, because it's new business. You stated that this was an isolated incident. Of course, to that proportion, that was an isolated incident, the question is, does the administration keep track of any drug rated incidents in the schools? Is there such statistics? Is the data, is it, and maybe the type of incident and that which school is some kind of aggregate statistics could be shared publicly?
Hey, I'll help you out.
Anybody else? Come on, come on down, there's a next person on the right.
Hi. My name is Arina Baranova and I have three children in public schools, home and public schools. One graduated last year and one is in high school and one is going to high school. And I'm here about drug issue also because I'm terrified because I know that in high school, drugs are being sold and being consumed in school, in, in school public bathrooms, in band closet, bedroom closet, at practices, at clubs. So, and I just can't understand where are the teachers, where the, the security that is increased? And the kids come high to school on a daily basis and unnoticed. It seems like everyone is like looking, oh, we were young, we all tried that, so it's okay, they're kids, they have experience, but it's not right. And I think our kids are in danger here. I know other public schools in other towns, they do drug tests if you go to a sports club. We don't do that also. I'm, I think something should be done on that matter. So that's why I'm here today because I think the problem is gigantic. It wasn't just one incident. It's like, it's like everybody in, in a high school and it was, you know, I, I mean, to some extent, right? So, but, and, and also middle school is, it's very, very, you know, it's like massive.
All right, well, we're going to, we're going to look into all of that, Mr. Northier, we'll look into the stuff regarding high school and then also, like we said, we're going to be speaking about drug policy and so on and so forth. So we're going to have more information and we'll, we'll keep it, take everything into consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you just check whether or not the NJAIAA is still doing the random drug testing that they used to do many years ago or if that has, thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else in the public? Okay. Is that, I'm, I'm going to need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Okay? All in favor?
All right.
Take a five minute.
All right.